Thank you. It's 6:00 PM on Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, and I hereby call the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council to order. Could you please bow your heads for invocation by Councilman Finley?
Heavenly Father, thank you for once again allowing us to gather here to discuss issues and strategies and implement them to best benefit our beautiful community. I ask all among us here tonight to say a prayer for the family of Johnny Walker. Johnny Walker was a city councilman from Pasture who passed unexpectedly. Father be with Johnny's family in their time of need and be with all in our Diamond Head community, Better Hill, and lift them up. In your son's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Deborah.
Here.
Councilmember Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Lacy.
Here.
Councilmember Cumberland.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Marr.
Here.
Could I get a motion to confirm or adjust agenda?
So moved.
Councilman Marr moved to confirm agenda. Could I get a second?
Second. Finley.
Second made by Councilman Finley. All in favor?
Need a roll call on that, Mayor, just to be sure.
Okay, roll call. I forgot. Go ahead. I'm sorry. City Clerk?
Finley?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Cumberland?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Marr?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. The next regular meeting of the City Council will be held on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers located at City Hall. City Manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give you guys an update on projects going on in the city. First off, contractor notification. At the request of Councilman Marr, I've asked all engineers to add to all future contracts and bid documents the stipulation that notification must be given to residents by the contractor before work can begin in the area. The city will also continue to notify residents about projects in their area, but this is specifically the day or time when the contractor gets ready to do something in that specific area or near that resident. The Dog Park, the engineering firm has provided the current draft design. That's my... I pass those two. Sorry about that. The engineering firm has provided the current draft design and an initial OPC for the Dog Park layout. All desired elements of the original design are included in the updated drawing. The new layout will be approximately 31,000 square feet of Dog Park or fenced-in area. The paving, 2025, the engineer is working on a bid start date schedule for this project. She's actually would be able to present to us that project tonight, but we'll wait till next council meeting to do that. And we hope to have a expect to have a presentation on the 18th, and then we'll advertise as well on the March 18th council meeting. If not, we may wait till the April first meeting in April. We are aware of the end-of-term requirements and are factoring those into the schedule of this project. The MDOT project, great news that the westbound on-ramp or exit ramp on the interstate was opened this afternoon. We drove I drove down there to take a look at it just to make sure, but it is now open for people to exit off the interstate to come into Diamond Head. The roundabout part and the rest of it at the very top is still going to be a bit confusing until they can get all of that finished, but we at least have the ramp open and we can get on it. So they'll start working on the other ramp here in the next probably few weeks. And I just got a text from the contract or from the engineer of the project about 5:30 this afternoon. He still found a spot that's giving him some trouble and is asking the contractor to install an additional culvert around that walking trail. There's still some standing water in that area that he didn't he did not like, so he's going to have them install another culvert to get that water from the north side of that walking trail to the south side. I spoke to the contractor this morning about it, and they are scheduling a meeting to talk with the Diamond Head Roundabout Project, and he'll give me some updates on that as well, probably after the meeting tomorrow. The Park 10 Road, the contractor still has a few items to work on that they need to finish, and then we will conduct a the walk-through on that project and get that one closed out. The engineer has discussed and submitted in writing the remaining items that need to be addressed, so we've been talking back and forth with them. We're looking at trying to do a ribbon cutting for that project and for the Noma Drive project as well on the same day sometime in April. The Kaliki Way project, the base repair and milling has all been completed. The contractor was out there today paving all the base repair sections. I believe they've got almost all of Aiki done, and then they'll they'll finish up or they'll continue on with the Kaliki and Amoka Drive areas as well, and then they'll come back and pave over the entire the entire area. Looking at probably maybe end of next week, possibly finishing the entire project. The contract on that expired today, so we do have a change order that we'll just put on the next agenda to extend that extra bit of time they needed due to the weather conditions that we've had. The Comey Drive and Calipacona Pond area, that project's for 120 days and currently has a June 10th end date. The contractor's back on site. He had some inlet couldn't couldn't get some inlets delivered, so they kind of waited for about a week for those inlets to get here. They finally were delivered, I want to say maybe Monday, and so he's been back out on they've been back out working on replacing all the landscape culverts and getting those drain inlets installed. Most of the almost all the driveway repair culverts have been already reinstalled. So once they finish that up, they'll get started on the pond dredging itself. The unit price projects have just been moving along. The La La Way is still waiting on the DNA to start the project on that one, just trying to get their materials put together and everything so they can get out there and do it. Expected to have that road closed for just one day while they install that culvert across the road. The other ones are just kind of trying to figure out exactly what we need to do to them, so we're still working on those, and engineers can finish up the designs and we'll get those worked on as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Marr, any comments?
Mayor Deborah, one more thing. I do have our new code enforcement officer, so if you don't mind, I would like to introduce him real quick. Jasmine Stefereovic, hopefully I said that correctly. We call him Jazz, that's what he goes by. He has been with us two months now roughly and has been doing a great job getting out there to determine what code violations are out there and getting with residents to get those straightened out. So I just wanted to introduce him while he's here and just so all of you can meet him.
And I think it's a great, great thing that we have one again, once again. And Mayor Deborah, it's my turn to start asking the questions of the City Manager and our now City Compliance Officer. So I'm going to ask you, you've been on the job about two months.
Yes, sir.
How do you find it?
Uh...
Do you need more help? Do you need another compliance officer, or is it enough that you can handle it all?
I think it's enough, so far so good. Like, I think I can handle it. Is it busy? It is, yeah. There's a lot of people like what I'm doing. I guess the ones that aren't in compliance, probably not, but I can't fulfill everyone's expectations and wishes, but I can promise that I will try and do my best to keep the standards of this city because the rumor is, and I'm not lying here, that it's really one of the most beautiful cities, and I've heard that from a lot of different people, and I'm now witness to all of that. It's really nice and beautiful community, and I will really try and do my best to help everyone. I just ask for citizens for to just work with us, and I promise we will still have beautiful Diamond Head as it is.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Clark?
Wait, wait, I have one for the City Manager now. So are we done with Jazz? You guys you guys put him on the spot. I think he did pretty well.
Thank you, everybody, for having me here. I really appreciate the chance.
Great to have you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
So, John, on...
Councilman Marr?
Thank you.
Excuse me. Was that all that? Did you ask the City Manager's questions, or you just...
I'm just about to. All right. John, on the MDOT projects, you said the next thing was the final ramp that they were going to start in on, but they're also in the same time already working on the bridge widening, and are they also working simultaneously on the circles, the rotaries, for both sides of the interstate?
Well, like I said, I talked with the engineer this morning, and he was meeting with the contractor on that Diamond Head project tomorrow, and then he was going to give me some information update on that. To me, they've got to right now, you know, I can't say how they're planning on doing it, but to me, I would go ahead and finish the roundabout on that south side or north side, I should say, to get that one complete. Maybe not all the paving done, but at least have that one completed, which is going to require them to close the road and force us to take half a roundabout or whatever. If that's what they do, they may just leave it open until the bridge is complete and everything there is open, and then close off just that middle section of the road to allow for that. Derek and I were talking about it, too, saying if you're coming off the bridge to make that roundabout, it might be a tight turn since you since you're over on that west side. We've been moved over there to make that turn to get around that. So they may wait until the bridge is complete and you have all four lanes on the bridge to then finish the roundabout itself, but I can find that out tomorrow and get a little bit more on what their stage and what their how their plan is to finish that out.
All right, and that was my final question is if the meeting tomorrow goes where you're privy to hear all this stuff, if you could get estimate, I know it's ballpark figures that might be months off, estimates of when they plan on doing each of those steps, the widening and the three circles spacing with three rivers.
I'll see if I can get an updated schedule from them of what they anticipate.
Thank you.
Councilman Clark?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Finley?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Lacy?
Thank you. John, just had a couple of questions about the Dog Park. How does the size of this new one compare to the other proposed plan that we had?
Hold on one second. I did bring that, yes. The original, according to the engineer, the fenced-in area for the Dog Park on the original layout was about a little less than 18,000 square feet. This one is going to be just just a little shy of 31,000 square feet.
Okay, so you gained some.
So it's it's going to be a lot larger as far as the fenced-in area. Overall size equivalent, that's about seven tenths of an acre, which I think Councilman Finley talked about last council meeting, half acre to an acre is about what a Dog Park size is. And we do have additional room that we could actually probably make it an acre if we wish, but we're leaving almost 100-foot buffer between where the fence ends and the neighbors are behind it, and we'll just leave that as the wooded area that's there so that prevents, you know, the interruption or annoyance for the for the residents.
That was my next question, how big is the buffer? So 100 feet of trees?
Yeah, I want to say it's, when I say it was like 94 and a half feet or something like that, so roughly about 100 feet.
Have you been in touch with those people since?
I sent all of them a letter. I haven't heard any responses back as to whether they have any questions or anything.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilman Cumberland?
John, you answered my question about the the buffer between the trees. I think that's great that you guys are doing that. I wouldn't make that any larger. I would leave that 100 feet if you can. I know that was a concern. The more trees, the better, so congratulations on doing this. I hate that I wasn't here for it last week to be a part of it, but yeah, I can remember sitting out there and seeing Ernie No Block up here talking about the Dog Park when he was Councilman-at-Large, so this is a long time coming. So congratulations, thanks. That's it, Mayor.
All right. The Dog Park has been a long time coming. A bunch of residents worked on it for three years every Thursday, but my questions about that will be at the next meeting. John, my question about Maui Circle, has that big pile of limbs been picked up yet?
I haven't had a chance to go back out there and check. Jazz has sent them and actually had conversations with the property owner there. I believe they worked with each other that the property owner was going to have to get the large logs and debris out of there, and then the our grapple truck would take care of the rest of it, but I'll I'll check to make sure.
All right. If you could let me know, and I'll ride by there tomorrow as well. Turnberry Way, you were going to send me an email. We discussed the last meeting to see if that was the last load of dirt, but I did not receive anything. Did you get a chance to look up whether or not more field dirt was going to be brought in?
Uh, no, I think I got sidetracked on other parts of that, but I'll get with Bo and find out if there's more that could be brought in there or not.
Can you send me an email and let me know?
I will do that.
Okay. Um, Compliance Officer, welcome aboard. I'm happy he's here. I had a question about, do residents instruct the Compliance Officer, do they have his cell phone number to go directly to him to let him know about compliance concerns, or is the policy for residents to call the office and let them know about compliance concerns?
We do have an email address that if a resident has a question or a concern, they can email the Compliance Officer directly.
Okay. Is his is his cell phone number out where residents can just call directly is my question?
I don't believe so, no, ma'am.
No, it's not? Okay. And I didn't think that was the case because that would be very hard for him to maintain his schedule, and he has got a very busy schedule. That would be very difficult for him to stay on track if residents were contacting him directly on the cell. Aluhai Drainage Project, with the rain recently, we had a lot of sod that fell in the ditches. It fell off the banks and fell into the ditch, and the contractor went back up and picked it up, and now they're falling into the culvert. Has he been made aware of this?
We did go out there a couple, well, a couple of weeks ago and did note that, and the contractor was coming back out the Monday of the next week. I'm not sure, that probably would have been Monday a week ago, but I'll check again to see if any of that has slid back down in there and get the contractor back out to make sure that sod is put in and some sort of, I don't know, stakes put to it to hold it in place.
All right, thank you. Um, City Clerk, is there anyone that's signed up for public comment?
No, no public comments.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the minutes, could I get a motion to approve the February 18th, 2025 regular meeting minutes?
Move. Finley?
Motion made by Councilman Finley. Could I get a second?
Second.
Marr.
Second made by Councilman Marr. City Clerk?
Finley?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Cumberland?
abstain.
Clark?
Yes.
Marr?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Could I get a motion to approve consent agenda items? Two through seven, two through five?
So moved. Lacy. So moved. Lacy.
Motion made by Councilman Lacy. Could I get a second?
Second. Cumberland.
Second made by Councilman Cumberland. City Clerk?
Finley?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Cumberland?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Marr?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Action Agenda Item Number Six. Could I get a motion for 2025-048, request to change sign ordinance for temporary signs such as election signs so that they can be placed on private property on city right-of-way as long as as long as at least two feet from the city street. Election signs are still to follow the 60-day prior to election to be put up and within seven days after the election to come down. Motion?
Move.
A second, but I would like to make a motion to...
Wait. Okay. The motion was on the table. Did somebody make the motion for it?
Yeah, I did. Cumberland.
Councilman Cumberland made the motion. Could I get a second?
Second. Marr.
Second by Marr. Councilman Cumberland, any any comments?
Yeah, yeah, my comments on this are, I think this is a good idea by Councilman Marr. The main thing that I feel needs to be changed in the verbiage, I mean, I guess we need to send it to P and Z to do it. I don't know if that's what Councilman Marr was going to do, but the signs are located on city property, state, other government property, including public lands. That's easy to figure out, but the right-of-ways and the easements is always, it's not very easy. It's very difficult to understand what that is, and so to have a point of reference like the road and a distance off of that road makes perfect sense, so I applaud him for that. I don't know that I agree with the two feet. I think that's a little bit close to the road and a little distracting, but eight feet from the road, anything that people can understand, this is this is where I'm allowed to put the sign, I think, is a huge step in the right direction.
Councilman Marr?
Yes, well, I would like to make an amend a motion to amend this because of the change of ordinance requires a 30-days review, and I think it's proper place then to have the public hearings, whether it be in Planning and Zoning. So I would move that we discuss this, but that we send this to Planning and Zoning for the public hearing.
All right. Councilman Cumberland, do you agree to the amendment on the motion?
Yes, I do.
All right. All right, Councilman Marr, is there any more discussion from you on the motion?
I'm good with what Mr. Cumberland said, so...
Okay. Councilman Clark?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Finley?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Lacy?
No, thank you.
And my thoughts is two feet is really too close, but it does need to be a distance because people are very confused, and then they get very upset when the signs are picked up. And without actually having a survey done, no one knows where the right-of-way is, so I'm in agreement with sending this to P and Z. City Clerk?
Finley?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Cumberland?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Marr?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. 2025-049, motion to request P and Z's recommendation for the following ordinance change, Section 436, livestock and fowl. Livestock and fowl are not permitted in the city limits. Could I get a could I get a motion?
Move. Clark?
And the recommendation requested is whether or not to allow residents to obtain a limited amount of chickens for the purpose of harvesting eggs and any stipulations that may be needed. Motion?
Move. Clark.
Motion made by Clark. Could I get a second?
Second. Cumberland.
Second made by Cumberland. Clark, discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I just had a few residents reach out over the past couple of weeks, and I've always seen it, talked on Facebook when the prices of egg prices of eggs rise, and it's never been discussed within, you know, within the council or the P and Z. So I would just like to send it to the P and Z and just see, you know, their recommendation, if they would like to change it or not.
All right. Councilman Cumberland?
I'm not in favor of this. I'm, uh, I think that Diamond Head, our lots are very close to one another. My grandfather had what was, he was called a chicken grower. They had 20,000 chickens in a house, and he had four of them, and then my uncle has eight, so I may not be a subject matter expert on chickens, but I do know they stink. And Diamond Head, I don't think, if you move to Diamond Head, I don't think you're expecting to have the ordinance changed to where your neighbor can now have chickens. The price of eggs has gone up, I think, from about $2 a dozen to $6 a dozen in the past few years, so, you know, if it if you eat a dozen eggs a week, you're looking at saving 20 bucks a month. I don't know how you're going to build a chicken coop and buy chickens and feed and everything like that to save $20 a month. I don't even, I don't know. I can't believe we're talking about chickens in Diamond Head. But anyway, I got a big no for this.
All right. Councilman Marr?
Yeah, I have the similar feelings to Mr. Cumberland that we don't really need chickens, but I have no problem with having it go before the Planning and Zoning for them to air it out and have public comment on it, so I'm okay with this motion.
Councilman Finley?
I agree with both Councilman Marr and Councilman Cumberland. The size of our lots in Diamond Head are not conducive to having fowl, and heaven forbid, the price of steak were to triple, we'd have cows in Peter's yard. I just, I don't think it's a good precedent. I would say no.
All right. Councilman Lacy?
Thank you. I also agree with my fellow councilmen who spoke before me. I think, you know, we've got to be careful not to lower our standards. As I understand it, the other cities near us that allow this have stipulations that say you have to be 300 feet, I think, is the norm away from your closest neighbor, and I don't know very many places in Diamond Head where anybody is 300 feet from from their neighbors. Additionally, I think there's some concern about rodents and possums and rats and skunks and other animals that this might attract, and that, you know, it just kind of opens another whole can of worms. And I'm usually all for sending things to P and Z, but unless it's really well-publicized and talked about, my my fear is that we may not get an accurate picture of who's for it and who's against it. I mean, I don't know, it's it's just a slippery slope. I'm concerned, and I think, you know, we it's up to us to, you know, maintain our quality of life and our standards, so I'm a no. Thank you.
All right. Um, I've been living in Diamond Head since 1993, and yes, I have seen chickens. I've seen chickens in Diamond Head. I haven't seen a lot of chickens, but I have seen chickens over the years. Although I do know the price of eggs has gone up, we did hear last night in the state of, from President Trump in his State of Address, that the price of eggs are going down. He's working very hard on it. So at this point, I think it's a topic we probably don't need to reach out and discuss. It's it's not conducive to Diamond Head, so I'm going to say we need to hold off on it. City Clerk?
Finley?
No.
Lacy?
No.
Cumberland?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
Marr?
No.
Mayor?
No. Could I get a motion to approve the document of claims, DKT232552, DK DKT2586, in the amount of $136,547.43? Motion?
Move. Clark.
Motion made by Councilman Clark. Could I get a second?
Second. Marr.
Second made by Councilman Marr. City...
Finley?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Cumberland?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Marr?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Is there any non-agenda comments?
None.
Councilman Marr, any closing comments?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Clark?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Finley?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Lacy?
No, thank you.
Councilman Cumberland?
No, thank you.
Is there any need for executive session?
No, there's not. No, there's not.
Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Move. Cumberland.
Motion made by Cumberland. Could I get a second?
Second. Clark.
Second. Clark. City Clerk?
Finley?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Cumberland?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.